Much the map of our total contribution to this intersection in one time. But it is the bigger question of, is it a significant impact that requires the kind of study to know what kind of improvement you would consider? I just heard testimony by Mr. McInley, I think it was, that he'd been given a price of four to $500,000 to redesign this intersection. You know, that will kill this project dead in a instant. You know, that is not a proportionate burden to place on CVS for these few seconds. You know, yes, for a big project like that, you know, if it's within the budget, you know, they're going to have that kind of impact. But this is like the tag, I mean, the tail of the dog trying to wag the dog. And we just don't have that, that kind of horsepower.
Well, I don't, I don't think, as Ms. Bishop stated, I, I don't, I don't think it would be that situation. When you look at it, the overall area, you know, if you've got somebody contributing 75%, somebody 10%, somebody 5% to make a hole.
But of what? Of what?
Well...
The intersection they worked out was the overall intersection, including all traffic from both, which is a huge intersection.
Right. But that's what we're a part of.
No, not necessarily. There are other improvements that can be made that are less, less than that. Maybe it's a second left turn lane, maybe there's additional improvement, it's not everything else.
But a second...
What I'm trying to say is that there are improvements, and you can sort of chime in if you're saying something wrong, but there are improvements that can be made that are less than, but loads for their site. And I think what you want to look at here is as far as what mitigation is that, if this can happen, then what that mitigation is, it'll be the minimal amount of improvement that you can make, to make a physical improvement in the intersection to improve it fast enough. That's what's in there. There's something that's less than doing everything in a day at a shoulder, that's what I'm saying.
Right. But Meredith, didn't I ask you about this, that if you put a second left turn lane, what do you have to do on Tenny Mountain?
If you put a second left through lane, which is the, which is the movement in question, you'd have to put a second through lane on Tenny Mountain Highway to accept it. That's in the ballpark of probably a quarter million dollar project. And don't forget, this is DOT signal, so you're gonna have to get them to buy into the fact that we would have to do this. It's their jurisdiction.
Well, that may, I mean, that may or may not be the best option, but I haven't really what to add now with detail, quite frankly, so.
Yeah, I couldn't think of anything else that I would do to mitigate CVS's impact of it.
You could add through lanes on Tenny Mountain Highway. You'll have to allocate, allocate more, more green time to such.
You could, but CVS doesn't have any traffic going through, so that's not CVS.
So I say the dog.
Thank you.
Very tough.
Thank you all. John Kelly?
First, I'd like to ask, under the present rules and regulations and so forth, is this relevant? Is this something that they might have to be required to do? I think, to tell you the truth, that the town of Plymouth is more in fault than anybody else, because we designed that intersection. We knew that, that businesses were going to be there. We didn't think it was going to stay family land or anything like that. So we're imposing a lot of expense on one company for items that we might have, should have foreseen and, and done everything right in the first place. Now we're imposing on this company to correct our mistakes, in a way. I also think that a lot of this is, that the opposition on this, a lot of it is self-serving, is that, is saying, gee, we really like this business, but we don't want the business because we're putting so many stopgaps on it. So I think that if it doesn't specifically say that we, that the CVS has to pay an impact fee at the moment, it's like saying that we're gonna have a 25 mile an hour zone next week, but really, right now, it's 40 mile an hour, and if the guy's going 35, you're gonna stop him and give him a ticket, because tomorrow it's gonna be 25 mile an hour. So consequently, if it isn't specifically stated that we, that they have to, not that they may, or they could, or they would, that they have to do this, then I think we had better do what Rhonda says and let this thing go through, but, but sit down and get some subcommittees and actually take a good look at Tenny Mountain Highway, which has been the redheaded stepson of Plymouth anyway, and go along and, and make a master plan for Tenny Mountain Highway. So we don't continually come up with these, these little objections. I know, I know Walmart, we spent five years doing that, and Lowe's did the same thing. And every time a business wants to come to town, we rake them over the coals for five years to, for little items, so let's make a plan. But if they don't have to do it, then I don't understand why they have to do it.
Well, number one, this hasn't been in the plans for five years, nor will it be in the plans for five years. And number two, we have had situations in the past, and again, this could be something that the, the subcommittee addresses, just like you stated. We have had instances where businesses have come in, and then other businesses, and then other businesses, and as a cumulative effect, traffic situation, traffic lights had to be put in, and the last one in paid the full bill. And that, that is where, that's something we have to look at. And whether, whether it be imposed on this project or not, that is up to this board, but that is the reason they're discussing the impact fees. Under, under Article 8, subsection F, it says, "The impact analysis and mitigation plan may be required," which takes into account the following items, "to the extent the board deems applicable: the demographic description and projected change, community facilities impact, sewage disposal, traffic, schools, recreation."
I have just one more shot thing to say, and that is, the town of Romney, if you buy a piece of land and you could build on it, they value that as a buildable lot. We knew businesses were going to build up there, and we should have planned on that and not go piecemeal every time somebody comes in to have to have them cost their quarter of a million dollars to, to, and drive them out of town.
Well, and I don't, I don't think...
Wait for that.
I don't think you were talking, I will say from my conversations with the town planner and others, that, I mean, it wasn't even anything like that, you know. But again, are there any other comments on, go ahead?
Yeah, well, what I'm hearing is that we have the option of either redoing the intersection with a left turn lane, it's considered an expense, or doing nothing. Is it, would it be considerably less expensive should the intersection be rebuilt by a larger developer to add this small left turn issue to that project? Is there a middle ground here where CVS could pay what impact they have, rather than overbuilding or not building at all?
I think the trick is to determine what that, that impact, the value of that impact is. And it's a, you know, once, if the intersection is designed by, by the lowest part that gets built, there's no traffic problem at that intersection. It's solved. If it doesn't, then, then, then there's a potential impact from, from this side and others. So it's, you know, so to determine what that, you know, whether it's a portion of that larger intersection, maybe it's like really can't do, really can't, it'd be really hard to, to look at that bigger intersection and say, well, okay, there, there's some chunk of that basically is traffic, or it'd be hard to do. It'd be, to me, it'd make more sense to look at, at, at something that would, the least you can do to this intersection, and maybe, maybe it's a left turn lane, I don't know, whatever, whatever it is, there's gonna be some, some lanes, there's gonna be some costs for sure, if you're gonna make any kind of physical improvement there, because there's not much else you can do. But then try to, try to take some portion of that, if we create low impact fee, and then try to apply it to this project. And that's gonna have to be based on the traffic bond that's generated in the site compared to the traffic bond that's using it, for everyone else that's using it. So I'm making a guess of that.
Clarify, I guess, a little bit, so if, if we were spending half a million dollars on this intersection, would a left turn lane still cost $200,000? I guess that's my question. You could get away, I assume, quite a bit less. So if you had this money in escrow, should the intersection be rebuilt? And should nothing happen, and there's no incremental change to worry about, because they're the only project, and we say it's insignificant to that intersection as it currently stands? I mean, is there, it seems like we're jumping from zero to huge numbers for a very small change in, in a, in a single lane of an intersection.
We're in a situation right now, we don't, we can't be assured that, that intersection as it stands is gonna be built. We don't guarantee it doesn't happen.
I'm sorry, but in which case, the money would be returned out of escrow?
Yes.
Not necessarily. In which case, then, if a, if a lesser improvement could be, could be determined, then, then that and those and other future developments would contribute towards the planning, whatever that is. Those are the two situations. One is a big intersection that might get built, and the other is a, is a, so I guess a lesser improvement, which is as minimal as possible, which would still be a significant improvement, that maybe at that point could, you know, apply an impact fee to...
Mr. Chairman?
It seems to me that this impact fee has sort of popped up. I mean, anybody that builds on Tenny Mountain Highway is gonna have an effect on that particular intersection. Anybody coming out of Plymouth to go to the Chinese restaurant that's gonna open up across from Walmarts, or the Dollar Store, and I don't, we don't have, I don't believe we have a policy where we assess impact fees to anybody that's gonna build on Tenny Mountain Highway. There's a lot of vacant land up there that eventually is gonna get built up. And I think, before we start trying to assess an impact fee on one, on one project, we should have a policy that affects everything that happens on Tenny Mountain.
Rhonda, do you have another question?
Yeah, just, just a little bit of how I kind of think. I think we should ask for some kind of step in, just, because we don't know what's gonna happen in the future, just like we didn't know what was gonna happen up in Boulder Point, just like we didn't know. I mean, I can't see asking any ridiculous amount of money. Mr. Hool brought up a very good point, as far as the impact on Highland Street. You know, if it's not gonna be touched for six years, it should be, you know, given back. I think that's great. But there's definitely gonna be some impact, and I think, you know, some, whether it's $50,000 to ask, just to put it into a, into the account, and just, it doesn't have to be used, but I mean, if something was to happen in the future, at least we can say, you know, why didn't we see that? You know, you know, that sort of thing. And I think you brought up a good point, too, but I think we have to start somewhere. So we start here, unfortunately, it's these guys, but the next time, they should also...
I don't believe we should start with these guys. I think we should decide, we're gonna have a program, an impact fee, that's gonna affect everybody. I mean, there's another impact fee that the town gets as a result of CVS or anybody else building on Tenny Mountain, and that's called taxes.
Yeah, exactly.
And a lot of people that build out there are paying a lot of taxes.
Exactly.
Should cover some of this stuff.
Yeah, and that's why we're having this discussion, too.
But I, I don't feel that this is something that we should land on CVS right here and now, because they're sitting here trying to get a permit.
Anybody else have any comment? Do I have, number two, the motion would be to impose the impact fee on this project for off-site traffic mitigation improvements, i.e. traffic light per zoning ordinance, Article 10, impact fees section. Do I have a motion?
Clarify that, would you?
Clarify what? We are, we are going, the motion is to impose a fee, an impact fee on, for the off-site traffic mitigation improvement, i.e. traffic lights. The authorization would be, it's actually, I don't know why they put 10, it's actually Article, Article 8, Article 8, section F.
Mr. Chairman, that's from the zoning ordinance, that's why it's 10.
Make your pardon?
That's from the zoning ordinance.
Oh, zoning, okay, all right, thank you.
It had nothing to do with the planning.
Right, okay. Well, the...
The zoning board would be the one...
Site, site plan review regulations, I'm sorry. So that, that would be the motion that would be brought forward and would be voted on. Do I have somebody that wants to propose that motion? Nobody? Dan?
I make a motion that no...
Not impose an impact fee.
No impact fee would be charged against this project.
Do you want to make a motion on this and then let us vote yes or no?
No.
All right, so we just...
I think it dies.
All right, so it dies, okay. There will be no action on the impact fee. Item number three, a motion to approve the submitted site plan proposal with the condition that the site plan submittal meets with the approval of the contracted town engineer, and that the town engineer provide construction oversight. We have any questions on this? Do we have a motion?
Make a move, show mood.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Item number four, and Brian, you might enlighten me on this one, because this was not on the one, and I would have talked to Miriam about it. Have CVS sign a development agreement that outlines these conditions prior to receiving a building permit. I am assuming what she's saying here is that had we done an impact fee, had we had the one-to-one mitigation, that it would have been part of an agreement before getting a building permit.
Correct.
Since these are not involved, since there was no one-to-one mitigation, there was no impact fee, would this one need to be brought forward? Because it would be nothing...
Yes, because of number two, what became...
Because of number three, the submitted site plan proposal?
Correct.
Okay.
And bringing my in on...
What?
Bringing the town engineer in.
Right, okay. So, so we would have, have CVS sign a development agreement that outlines these conditions, and the only condition would be item number three, motion to approve the submitted site plan proposal with the condition that the site plan submittal meets with the approval of the contracted town engineer, and that the town engineer provide construction oversight.
I'll make a motion, so.
Second? John Kelly? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those that object? Unanimous? We have taken care of that. All right. Mr. Chairman, do you want to resume your place? Now we'll relinquish the gavel.
Moving on to item seven, let the notes show that Assistant Acting Chairman Mike Ahern resumed back to the table. Item seven, unfinished and other business.
I would like to discuss, as Rhonda suggested, forming a subcommittee to look into the two items that were discussed here, the one-to-one mitigation and impact fees.
These are a half of a motion or approval? Well, I think, I think maybe, well, it's up to you.
How do we normally do that?
I've only done this under the aegis of the Board of Selectmen, so I'm not sure if the procedures are different, or if it would have to come from them being the governing body. It would be essentially a flossing on their part to, for you guys to go through with your business. To do that, you could, at this point, it wouldn't be illegal at all to name members or, you know, take volunteers for it, put it out to the public. At that point, we'll notice the Board of Selectmen, they can also put it on their agenda for public announcements, and we'll...
Form a subcommittee that would come up with recommendations, and then we could deal with them on a one-to-one, one-on-one.
Yep.
I mean, that'd be my suggestion, that we...
I think what we need to do is task the Board of Selectmen to, we would give a recommendation to the Selectmen to task a committee, a subcommittee, to look at this.
I agree.
Do we want to make a motion to...
I make a suggestion. Just when you're looking at, at floodplain fill, and it's basically impacts of downstream, no question that's a, is a cool, without the talk you were talking about, but the other effect on, on what, on how watershed deliver water to streams, and what causes the flood is basically increased impervious area. The regulations now are pretty clear, they have to mitigate the increase in deep discharge rates, which you do on every project. What it doesn't say is just if you pave an area, if you build a building, build a house or drive it, all those are basically increased impervious areas as well, and you're not recharging that water back into the ground. So that makes an enormous difference in the amount of water that goes downstream, and then all the flooding that you're gonna have, so. So if you're gonna look at, I guess if you're gonna look at whether you should be filling and not filling floodplains, you really gotta take a look at the entire watershed, and what happens there as well. I say this in, in light of the DES and their alteration of terrain regulation now, they've changed that, they changed the regulation within the last year, they mandate that a certain amount of recharge has to occur, depending on your soil type. That may be something you want to consider as part of your regulations for sites that are below the alteration of terrain threshold, because that's, as much as, as filling a floodplain here and there does have an effect, probably a large effect on the watershed, is basically the, the change in surface types, and the change in paving and buildings, and taking woodland, and making grass, and all that, that water's running off downstream, whether it goes to retention basin or not, if it's not gonna be charged back into the ground, has a big effect on your, on your watershed and on your river and stream. So just, if you're gonna look at, I guess if you're gonna look at flooding issues and floodplain issues, part one, my local is that is wrong.
You got it.
Thank you, thank you, Mike.
Just a comment, like you asked an engineer. In percentage-wise, has the new skating rink, university skating rink caused any change in, or did they mitigate in the same floodplain when they built up all their, the fill against that building? And for, percentage-wise, from CVS to the, to the new university skating rink, what impact, what percentage of impact would CVS have in regards to the new skating rink? I don't know whether I'm explaining that right or not, but I guess what I'm saying is, there, there was absolutely enough, no discussion at all about the new skating rink, and that's a big, big building, but, but there had been a lot of discussion on any of the buildings on Tenny Mountain Highway. It's in the same floodplain. And then one other thing, when 93 was built, they took out a lot of earth on those seals over there. And I would assume that you could build an awful lot of six-foot, six-foot buildup of earth to compensate for that, that large, large amount of, of reservoir that they created back in those days. Just, just a thought of mine. So that, when you're talking about 16,000, 20,000 cubic feet, cubic yards of, of earth, that could be lost in a small pocket of that new reservoir that they built when, when they built Interstate 93. But, but my biggest concern is, why do we spend so much time on, on people that will pay us taxes on the floodplain, where people that, even though there's a big economic impact on Plymouth, they don't pay taxes, and there was absolutely no discussion in that at all. But, and I realize it was an oldness, but I still think that that was a regional type of thing that we should have been involved in.
I have no idea what the floodplain impacts are. The, the, it's obviously larger than how deep the floodplain is, it seems like it'd be a lot larger, but, you know, what the, is it? I couldn't tell you.
I, I think the task of putting together the subcommittee, it's, it's gonna be very entailed. I know when we put the subcommittee together for the master plan, it wasn't just done that night, and there was quite a bit of time picking who was gonna serve on the committee. I think it's gonna involve Miriam and the next planner that's coming aboard. It's gonna take a while before they even, probably meet for the first time, but I think we're in agreement that something needs to get done. I don't know whether we need a motion tonight.
I think, in order to make the recommendation to the Board of Selectmen, you do need a motion.
Okay, so we would need a motion at this point?
But it can be very broad in scope at this point. I don't even think you need to reiterate just what they'd be looking at. I mean, regional impacts, previous mitigations, I mean, the, the scope can be honed at the committee level, and if, you could probably even, or they're gonna be mandated to make it reportable to the planning board, you know, on regular updates.
I make a motion, I make a motion that we request the Select Board to establish a subcommittee to study our regulations on mitigation and impact fees.
There's a second?
Those are two, those are two separate subcommittees.
Exactly.
But I think they both need to be, I think they both need to be addressed. Could we make it a little bit broader and not just put those two points? Because I think the time has come that we should go to Littleton, because they had a tremendous growth up there of Sam's Club and the whole nine yards, and it was all built in the flood zone. So if we, we're not an island within ourselves, Plymouth isn't, even though we sometimes think we are. I think that if we could get maybe even representatives from them to come in and try to help us, I'm sure that they would be willing to do it. They were for the Fire and Police Department, I'm sure they could do that. I'm sure there's people down in Tilton that could come in and tell us, so we could have a real broad scope, so we don't get into this bind every time somebody comes in and comes up with a new idea.
And I think that would be part of what the subcommittee would look at.
Right, right.
Do we have a second? We have a motion?
I'd just like to throw this in before the second goes in.
Sure.
Because I, like John had mentioned, make it a broader thing, don't define, it's just gonna be those two issues, because another thing, just like a Tenny Mountain committee, subcommittee be done, because the other thought I had, that I'd like to see, is probably, which was brought up before with the CVS, and that was like color, trying to stick with some sort of color.
Design review.
Design, yeah. Main Street is trying to do, they're trying to keep things, you know...
Can I, can I interject?
Go ahead, Mr. Kelly.
In the, in the actual regulation, it says, "A town may request," and I'm sure Brian could, if I'm wrong, can tell me about, "may request a color change." They cannot demand a color exchange.
Right.
So, so, and, and in essence, if you want to have everything the same color, number one, it takes away our freedom a little bit, and number two, if you want to go to and live in a project, you go live in a project with all little ranch houses all colored blue. And I don't think that's what Plymouth represents, you know?
Ms. Bishop?
For instance, if you go down to the Cape, you know, they don't have how McDonald's is with the big yellow M. You don't see that in, in their little community. I don't think that, we don't want McDonald's coming in and having their big M, bright yellow, that would take away from our community. That's what I'm talking about, stopping somebody from doing, we can't stop them from doing different colors, but we can suggest, and, just like you said, but I'm just saying, have some respect, and this is what we'd like to see.
Most of the national concerns will, will, will align themselves to the, and I, by the way, I have relatives on the Cape, and I go down there a lot of times, and Lowe's built down there, they didn't change their colors, Marshalls went down there, they didn't change, none of them really changed it. If, if the town of Hyannis or somebody like that asks them to sort of tone it down a bit, I have never seen any of your national concern not take that into consideration.
I think we, we're, we're a couple of years off from starting to look at our master plan again. Maybe those might be topics we could look at, that. I think for now, the issues that are upon us are mitigation and impact fees. We have a motion on the table by Mr. Rinlett, if there's a second, and then we can discuss it after that.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Okay, so the motion is to task the Board of Selectmen, we're putting together a subcommittee, recommend looking at mitigation and impact fees with the applicants in front of the planning board. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
You can...
So that passes.
Good.
We'll draft something up with Miriam?
Sure.
Yeah, I'll get with her on that, and we'll bounce it around to varying places. Would you like to see, before it's presented, or just in... I have a question.
I would like to... I would like to actually be considered to be honest.
Oh, no, sorry. We can't have anyone.
Any other unfinished or other business? Yes, Mr. Berman.
I have a question. This... we're talking about the ice skating rink. I know that Holderness, if you go to build on North River Street, or for that matter, South River Street, they probably wouldn't give you a permit. And I... did they deal... did the planning board in Holderness have some hearings on the ice skating rink?
I know that University did come to this planning board and talk about their plans with us.
Yeah, in a very general way.
In a very general manner.
The grand plan, 12 years.
Tell us what was going to happen.
But they're going to put a lot of stuff on the other side of the river.
That's right.
A lot of stuff. And I'm just wondering how Holderness is dealing with it or if they're going to be allowed to do it. If that ice skating rink was on our side of the river, I don't think we'd have any more input in it than we did on the Holderness side, frankly.
Mr. Scutcliffe?
No, I think I agree with you. My understanding of the parking lot up here was that they told us what they were planning to do, and we told them, "Go ahead."
Yeah.
Tell them anything else.
Did we have any discussion with them on Langdon Wood? I mean, you know.
Again, I think it was...
Traffic patterns, you know, down the hill on the Route 3.
You can make recommendations to them. They don't have to listen.
That's right.
That's right.
They're exempt by statute.
That's right.
All right, we'll go... very good points to bring up, and I think there's a lot of people who'd like to know. They have to have a little bit more say on what happens, but it is a courtesy on their part. I guess we'll move on to item number eight, public comments. Mr. Hool.
I think the subject that you're talking about, the improvements to campus that's made on the other side of the river. There were public hearings held, both in Plymouth and over in Holderness. I attended all but one of those hearings, both here and over there. There was a major change made to their overall phase redevelopment of that side of their campus. The athletic facility, the fieldhouse, which is in the floodway, was going to remain in the floodway. They got severely criticized by a number of people for it being kept in that floodway in light of the regulations that have been adopted by the Fed, that you can't build any immovable structures in floodway. They ultimately conceded to that, and they're now planning, I'm told, that to take down that fieldhouse entirely and build a new facility displaced further to the west in what is the floodplain. As far as mitigation for what they built already in the floodplain or what they will be building in the future in the floodplain, again, they were asked about that, but they have not taken on the additional cost related to mitigation as far as I know.
Their plan is to build a significant amount of stuff right on that plain.
Near North Main Street.
I mean, classroom facilities, the whole thing. They have no place to expand in Plymouth.
Hacks and everything.
And Sarah Jane Stein came to the Rotary and gave us a broad overview, but that's floodway, floodplain, whatever. There's going to be a lot of mitigation if they try to build that.
My comment I wanted to make, if I may continue, is with regard to zoning ordinance or subdivision regulations or site plan, et cetera, this planning board has exclusive authority over those documents as they exist or as they may be modified. So it's incumbent upon the board to decide what, if any, kind of a study committee they want to establish to investigate any aspects within those documents. It's not the responsibility, it's not the authority of the Select Board to do that by the statute, so you should be aware of that. Last comment I was going to make, I asked Mr. Vignali here what the maximum vehicle count was that was associated with this CVS, and he advised that it was 70 vehicles at the peak hour. If you take that on a whole-day basis, whether they're a 24-hour operation or not, you're probably talking on the order of 400 to 500 vehicles minimum going to that facility. As a percentage of vehicular traffic on Highland Street, that could amount to upwards of 10 to 15 percent. And therefore, heard on my earlier comment, the impact that they really have is on the traffic volume on Highland Street, not so much the turning impact that they have at the streetlight. And it is entirely justifiable to have asked them for some modest contribution towards the further continued improvements of Highland Street that remain to be done.
Mr. Tim. I believe the only thing that has to be done on Highland Street, if I'm not mistaken, is Section A, Section B, that's going down over Highland Hill, down from the top of Oars Hill down to Broadway, right? The rest of that...
And Ward Hill Road.
Right, that's... right, that's down that way. So it really... what had been done for the intersection to Tenny Mountain Highway should have been engineered to the point of realizing there were going to be buildings and going to be businesses there prior to this. So we shouldn't cram this down their throat because we made a mistake and have them have to pay an impact fee for something that won't affect them at all because we were going to do that in the first place. We haven't... we're not going to change our plans. We're going to do that section, and we were going to do it whether CVS is here or not.
The point, John, is that they're adding volume. They're adding traffic movement over that roadway when they establish their business.
That's right.
So in terms of the town's interest in trying to aggregate money to finish out that last section, that is a reasonable source of contribution to add to the town's share of completing that.
We also have a site for the Fire Department and Police Department that's going to impact Highland Street a lot, not as much as that, but it's going to affect it tremendously because you're going to have to have fire engines coming out on that street, maybe at one of the business times of the thing, and nobody's going to take care of that.
I think this is an excellent discussion to have for the subcommittee. Mr. Rinlett, did you have another?
No.
Any other unfinished or public comments at this point? All right, we're moving to item nine. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion. We adjourn.
Second.
Second? So moved.
Time?
Time is 8:29.